Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Escondido City Council. Please rise for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the flag salute.
Yes, please join me in a moment of reflection. We come together tonight to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to serve here in the city of Escondido. We come together tonight as a diverse community, a community of backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence and different futures, yet one common goal that is the betterment of this city. We come together tonight to seek guidance, wisdom, and discernment during deliberations that transpire this evening, and in doing so, we lift up Councilmember Fitzgerald, Councilmember Joe Garcia, Councilmember Christian Garcia, Deputy Mayor Martinez, and Mayor White. May they be granted peace and wisdom as they lead our city into a bright and prosperous future. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This meeting is called to order. We'll do a quick roll call. Councilmember, am I on discussion? Councilmember Fitzgerald?
Present.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Christian Garcia?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Martinez?
Present.
And I, Mayor White, am here. We'll move on to our proclamations, and the first one up is Drinking Water Week and Water Awareness Month. Did my microphone just turn on? Yeah, that was intense. Anybody associated with this one is welcome to join me at the front. Come on down. All right. Whereas access to safe, reliable drinking water is essential to the health, prosperity, and freedom of every American family, and it is a cornerstone of public health and economic opportunity in our communities; and whereas the city of Escondido is proud to invest in and maintain modern, efficient water infrastructure that reflects our values of local leadership, self-reliance, and responsible governance; and whereas Drinking Water Week and Water Awareness Month provide an important opportunity to recognize the dedicated professionals and private sector partners who ensure the delivery of clean, safe drinking water to homes, businesses, schools, and farms across our region; and whereas water conservation is not only an environmental responsibility but also a practical duty of good citizenship, ensuring that future generations can enjoy the same opportunities and quality of life that we do today; and whereas Escondido has long led the way with forward-thinking policies, community outreach, and water recycling and reuse programs, showing that local innovation and accountability deliver real results; and whereas preserving our water supply requires cooperation between all levels of government, private enterprise, and the public, working together through common sense policy, fiscal discipline, and individual action. Now therefore, I, Dana M. White, Mayor of the City of Escondido, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through 11th, 2025, as Drinking Water Week and the month of May 2025 as Water Awareness Month in the City of Escondido, and invite you all to join us in the celebration.
On behalf of all the staff who work hard on our water systems daily to provide the community with clean drinking water, thank you, Mayor and Council, for recognizing Water Awareness Month and Drinking Water Week. And thank you to all of this year's participants in our annual Fourth Grade Love Water/Save Water poster contest. We will announce the winners of first, second, and third place at the council meeting on May 21st. And I want to invite the public to join us in celebrating the value of water resources this month by entering Escondido's Water Smart Landscape Contest by the contest deadline this Friday, May 9th. And by encouraging anyone interested in making their landscape more water-efficient, to get started by picking up free compost this week from Escondido's recycling and waste reduction team. Adding compost to your soil can enable it to absorb water better, reducing erosion in heavy rains, and retaining water in droughts. Visit the Environmental Programs page of the city website for more information on both the landscape contest and the compost giveaway. Thank you.
Thank you all. This is for you. Can we get a picture before you go? Would like to invite anybody from the clerk's office to join me up front. These are the people who really make the wheels work and the gears turn here in the city. So whereas the office of the municipal clerk is a vital part of local government, and whereas municipal clerks provide the professional link between the citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels; and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality rendering equal service to all; and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of their duties through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations; and whereas the city of Escondido recognizes the significant contributions of its municipal clerks to the community. Now therefore, I, Dana M. White, Mayor of the City of Escondido, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through 10th, 2025, as Municipal Clerks Week in the City of Escondido, and encourage all citizens to recognize the vital services provided by municipal clerks and by their staff. Thank you.
On behalf of the entire City Clerk's Department, thank you again for recognizing our department. It's a true honor to serve our city council, city staff, and the general public. We remain committed in providing quality customer service to everyone. Thank you.
No public report. Thank you, Mayor.
And non-agenda public comments?
Yes, we have a few. Our first is Joe Howd. Joe Howd. Catherine Fromm. Catherine, yeah, it's your turn now.
Hello. I'm Catherine Barber Fromm. I live at 907 Luna Vista Drive. I was born here. I went to five schools in eight years and moved once. I'm a graduate of all the institutions around here, and I went to UCLA. The Barbers are pretty scrappy people, and I'm here to defend David Barber, who I'm not related to. Your action in dismissing Mr. Barber was reprehensible, despicable, and a few other things I could say. I guess the rest of us cannot be on boards and commissions because we make the mistake of going to a Democratic rally opposing a president who is a criminal, was convicted of felonies. I deeply regret that you do this. The rest of us deserve to be represented. I and people who were born here, excepting the mayor, who was also born here, are watching what you do. This is our valley, and we don't like interlopers who come here and mess with things we don't like. There's a lot of history in this valley of things that shouldn't have happened, sunset laws, things that happened to black people, but we have all tried to move ahead, and unfortunately have not. Because I'm reading a book, as a loyal native Californian does, about the state of California, I can tell you from page 92 and other sources, this is also mentioned, that Kit Carson was a good Indian fighter, and he's quoted here about the battle and massacre of some indigenous people, and said it was a perfect butchery. While we have a park named for someone like this, I've never understood, I don't understand it, and I think you all ought to try to represent all of us and not some faction you decide for yourself. Thank you, have a nice day.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Items 1 through 9 are on consent. I move to approve the consent calendar unless somebody has something they need to pull. If not, I would ask for a second.
I second.
Oh.
Looks like several of us got signed out of our voting screens.
This proves why City Clerks Week is essential.
Okay, voting is open. Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, on to our current business is the battery energy storage systems within the city of Escondido. Would invite anybody up for the presentation. The time is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. My name is Veronica Morones, and I am our city planner. With me this evening is Levana Koretki, our deputy fire marshal. And we're here to present item number 10 to you this evening, which entails reporting out on the staff-led research into the battery energy storage systems, which began with the adoption of the interim urgency ordinance back in the fall of 2024. The action before the council this evening is to receive and file this presentation and ultimately provide direction to city staff on next steps, that the council would like staff to take regarding BES regulation and the current interim urgency ordinance prohibiting commercial utility scale facilities within the city. To provide a brief refresher on what a BES is, a battery energy storage system is a facility that collects energy from the grid, stores it, and then discharges it to the grid at a later time, usually during peak demands for purposes of creating grid reliability. For the purposes of the city's adopted urgency ordinance, a commercial utility scale BES is a commercial facility whose primary use is to provide electricity to third parties. The journey leading us to this evening's presentation entails previous actions by the city council, specifically city council adopted ordinance 2024-14R on November 20th of 2024, extending the urgency ordinance that was originally adopted on October 9th, 2024, in compliance with state law. Preceding both of those actions was council's adoption of resolution 2024-113, which provides a position on such facilities within and around the city of Escondido. During those previous meetings, council provided specific direction to evaluate minimum workforce standards, evaluate the San Diego County's best practice guidelines, identify a threshold of a small versus large facility, and consider development of an emergency response plan requirement for such facilities. Since the last action in November, staff have continued to research BES topics, including but not limited to existing regulatory frameworks, BES practices, and technical operations and mechanics of such facilities. With regard to workforce standards, at this time, the two primary examples of setting a workforce minimum are the requirement to have energy storage and microgrid training and certification, known as ESAM-TAC, as well as a requirement to use C-10 certified contractors for certain components of BES work. For example, Kern County adopted workforce minimums requiring C-10 contractors for certain facets of BES development, and the San Diego County guidelines recommend minimum workforce standards as mitigation for potential failures and incidents. With regard to the San Diego County guidelines, city staff reviewed these guidelines, which contain many recommendations and guidance for BES facilities. The intent of these guidelines is to support the county's review and permitting process for BES by providing clear direction on how to meet the intent of Section 1.1.2 of the California Fire Code, which I'll refer to as CFC from here on out. City fire personnel recommend the city follow the county's guidance document with the ultimate goal of incorporating the guidance into the Escondido Fire Code. In the interim, city staff recommend the city council direct us to implement the guidance. The reason for such recommendation stems from Escondido Fire's involvement in the development of the county's guidelines as a stakeholder, leading to our fire personnel having a firm understanding of the guidance and how it was developed. While ultimately, the San Diego Board of Supervisors chose not to adopt the guidelines at the hearing in late 2024, they did direct county staff to implement them as determinations within the Fire Code and to also return with these guidelines consolidated into their CFC updates. With regard to emergency response plan development, Senate Bill 38 passed by the state legislature in 2023 requires an emergency response plan for all BES facilities. The law requires the owner or operator of the facility, in developing the plan, to coordinate with local emergency management agencies, unified program agencies, and local first response agencies. It's worth noting that the San Diego County guidance recommends additional response plans for facilities, such as emergency operation plans and fire safety and evacuation plans. City staff met with several stakeholders over the past six months to discuss the BES prohibition and was provided with resources and information regarding BES technology, process, and stakeholder interests. All stakeholders met with up to, the writing of the staff report are identified in Table 1 of tonight's staff report for this item. However, since the writing of this report, city staff also met with the Clean Energy Alliance and Clean Tech San Diego to discuss the topic. Finally, city staff are continuing to investigate size thresholds and do not have a recommendation at this time regarding applicability of size. Ultimately, if directed to produce regulation for council adoption, city staff would include a standard-associated facility size in that language. Additionally, city staff continue to work with SDG&E regarding the Enterprise Fire in an effort to obtain any necessary and relevant information pertaining to the incident in an effort to inform local regulation. This slide depicts the table provided within your staff report under Table 1. The handful of stakeholders staff met with range from interested individuals, to BES developers, to government agencies, and utility providers. Staff heard a wide range of opinions regarding regulatory approaches, but the common themes across numerous stakeholders include: support for safety, consistency and stability of local regulation, and a stance to not ban such use outright within the city. In the event, council directs staff to pursue adoption of BES regulations, either through the forthcoming CFC update as recommended by staff, or via a land use ordinance, further outreach efforts would occur and would entail a proactive outreach process by the city. Before we delve into the options available to council as denoted within the staff report, it's important to note that city staff received four public comments on this item. All commenters are stakeholders the city engaged with during the past several months. The general themes of the public comments include those of lifting the urgency ordinance, establishing regulation via the CFC, and establishing regulatory requirements for workforce minimums. With that, city staff have provided council with a number of options that council may direct staff to undertake. It should be noted that the list of options under Table 2 and generally summarized on this slide are not an exhaustive list, and the council may choose an alternative option not presented by staff. Further, staff's recommended option balances the time sensitivity of adopting new regulation while also ensuring health and safety considerations as a top priority. The CFC update is a recurring process and is required to occur regardless of the BES urgency ordinance and the city's interest in adopting regulation. Therefore, leveraging this already occurring process provides for a level of efficiency and streamlining that would most likely not be available to a completely new work effort, such as developing a land use ordinance. Ultimately, the council maintains the authority to direct staff to abandon progress on such regulations, or direct staff to abide by the San Diego County guidance without formally adopting it, or direct staff to adopt such guidelines as part of our recurring CFC update, which is our recommended option and parallels the county's direction. We could also develop city-specific guidelines that could be incorporated into the 2025 CFC update, or develop a specific land use ordinance, as well as any combination the council could deem appropriate thereof. It is important to note, however, that staff have not identified the resource needs beyond what is identified within Table 2 of the staff report. Therefore, if the city council directs staff to pursue a pathway that is not the staff recommendation, staff would most likely need to return to council in the near future with additional information regarding potential costs and timelines. Finally, city staff request direction on whether the council wishes to maintain the urgency ordinance, which is set to expire on October 5th, 2025, or rescind it at any point between now and October 5th. Ultimately, however, the council directs staff, with exception of abandoning this work effort altogether, general next steps would entail progressing forward with community outreach, research and study, and working cross-departmentally to ensure an effective product for adoption. With that information, that concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions.
We'll go over public comments first, and I've turned the dais on to request to speak, so while the public commenter speak, if you want to get in the queue, please do.
Our first speaker is Corey Schumacher.
Good evening, Escondido council members. Honorable Mayor White, Deputy Mayor Martinez, and council members, my name is Corey Schumacher. I am the policy director of IBW 569, representing 3,700 union electricians and power professionals from San Diego County to Imperial County. We have 250 of our members and their families living right here in the city of Escondido. So tonight, here I am tonight to urge you to do three things. The first is to rescind the urgency ordinance enacting a moratorium on commercial battery energy storage systems. This is option B in your staff report. Also urging you to direct staff to incorporate the county's guidelines as part of the upcoming California Fire Code, the CFC-required update. This is staff's recommendation, which we believe is a good one. This is option 3 in your staff report. And finally, to direct staff to incorporate further minimum workforce safety standards for all stages of the BES lifecycle, including installation, assembly, testing, commissioning, maintenance, repair, retrofitting, and decommissioning into the CFC update. Regarding staff recommendation, option 3, in 2024, the County of San Diego Fire Protection District researched and developed the BES practices report in response to community concerns over a series of BES incidents. We submitted a part of that report to you in two letters, once in November and then most recently on Monday. The report provided valuable guidance for the safety permitting and compliance for BES installations. We feel it would fit well in the city of Escondido as well, although IBW 569 noted a lack of specificity to the county guidelines around workforce safety standards. And so we would urge you, and we urge the county, to revise the guidelines to include explicit policy recommendations establishing minimum workforce safety standards for all stages of the BES lifecycle. To address this need, we urge city council to direct staff to incorporate into the CFC update the following workforce safety standards for all BES projects with an energy capacity exceeding 70 kilowatt hours. First is to use certified electricians for all electrical work. This also coincides with the staff recommendation or the staff mentioning for the use of C-10 licensed contractors. They employ certified electricians. And second is to implement a requirement to use energy storage and microgrid training certification. That's the ESAM-TAC certification you heard of. Require that a minimum of 15% of all onsite certified electricians performing electrical work hold ESAM certification. We commend the thorough work of staff and the genuine care you all have shown in pursuing these standards. We look forward to continuing to be your partners in safety to prevent incidents before they happen. Thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker is Jason Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor White and council members and staff. My name is Lauren Casares, policy advisor at the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce, whose mission is to make the San Diego region the best place to live and work. The chamber represents over 2,000 member businesses and 300,000 jobs regionally, and as I've shared at previous city council meetings, we are proud supporters of battery energy storage systems, AKA BES, throughout San Diego County. On behalf of the chamber and our clean energy partners, I respectfully urge the city council to lift the moratorium on BES enacted under Urgency Ordinance Number 2024-12R and extended by Interim Ordinance 2024-14. When first introduced, the moratorium was described as a temporary pause to explore reasonable safety standards. However, as city staff has indicated tonight through their update, a permanent regulatory framework could take one to two years or longer to finalize. This timeline far exceeds the original intent and places Escondido at risk of falling behind on its own climate action and energy goals. As you know, Escondido's Climate Action Plan calls for the development of clean, resilient energy infrastructure. BES development is central to achieving that goal. These projects also bring local benefits, including well-paying jobs, significant property tax revenues, and long-term investment in sustainable infrastructure. Modern BES facilities follow strict standards, which include advanced fire suppression systems, gas detection, and 24/7 monitoring, and regular inspection by trained professionals. Additionally, updated state fire codes are of course anticipated this year. For these reasons, the chamber urges you to allow projects to move forward under today's robust safety standards, while working collaboratively with experts and stakeholders to shape future city regulations. The chamber stands ready to support the city in developing thoughtful, balanced regulations that protect public safety and support Escondido's clean energy future. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Our next speaker is Cody George.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. My name is Cody George. I'm one of the co-founders and president of Sales of Ravenbolt. We design and build microgrid installations and then utility battery systems throughout the country. I'm here on behalf of a customer of mine, Middle River Power. Primarily, I'm here to discuss what an engineering procurement and construction company does. So from a job creation perspective, projects of this size will probably be employing somewhere between 100 to 200 local people in this area. Projects of this size require what's called prevailing wages, so it's a very high wage for that particular trade, somewhere in the order of 10 to 15 different trades, where I'm considering local civil engineering. I'm considering local civil engineering firms, electricians, civil contractors, landscaping professionals. So they're very high-wage jobs. It'll more than likely be a year to two-year project just to construct. Nationwide, we always take safety very seriously. Electrical distribution is by nature, requires a high degree of safety, and so when we do develop or design and construct utility battery systems throughout the country, we always hire a third-party fire engineering firm to make sure we're working with the local fire authority to make sure that that system meets their requirements. Thank you very much for having me.
Our next speaker is John Boyer.
Good evening, Mayor White and council members. My name is John Boyer. I'm Director of Environmental Health and Safety at Middle River Power. I wanted to start thanking city staff for their effort and transparency through this process, and I'm here to urge the council to adopt staff's recommendation to move forward with option 3, to incorporate the county's BEST safety guidelines into Escondido's Fire Code, and do it immediately and implement the 2026 Fire Code when it comes out. And most importantly, adopt option B and rescind the current urgency ordinance. The combination of ending the moratorium and adopting enforceable safety standards now allows well-designed projects to move forward safely and responsibly. The city can condition the project approvals on compliance with the 2026 Fire Code once it's released. In the meantime, the fire department can enforce safeties using the county guidelines and its authority to require site-specific protections. When the council adopted the urgency ordinance, as I remember, it was made clear that it's not intended to be permanent, and acting now is a responsible step that honors the intent and ensures Escondido remains open to safe, smart, clean energy development. The company I work for is Middle River Power, as I said. It's one of the companies working to bring these safe, well-designed projects into life right here in Escondido. We're developing the 52-megawatt lithium-ion phosphate battery energy storage system at our Cal Peak Enterprise peaking facility, which is off Auto Parkway. Although our project is permitted by the California Energy Commission, we're here to, because we value the local dialogue, and we cause a shared commitment to safety and community engagement. As Director of EHS, my role is to ensure safety is built into every step of what we do, from design to operation. Battery technology's come a long way. The systems we develop today use lithium-ion phosphate, which is significantly more stable and has no history of thermal runaway. Projects like ours follow the strictest safety codes in the country, including NFPA 855, UL 9540, and 954A testing, and the California Fire Code. We also work directly with local fire agencies to do ensure coordination, access, and emergency response planning, because safety is our priority. Battery and energy storage systems play a vital role in building a cleaner, more resilient energy grid. They support solar and other renewables, improve reliability during peak demand times, and avoid the need for expensive new transmission lines. Beyond the environmental and reliability benefits, projects like ours also bring economic value. BEST facilities could generate construction jobs, income and sales tax revenue, and long-term investment in the local economy. Tonight, I have the opportunity to end the moratorium and adopt enforceable safety standards and welcome innovation without sacrificing community protection. With the right policies in place, the city can support clean energy progress.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired, sorry. But real quick, before you go, what was, you said lithium phosphate? Give me that again real quick. That was going to be one of my questions for you anyways.
Lithium phosphate iron.
Lithium phosphate ion?
Iron, I-R-O-N.
Okay, thank you.
Not ion, because all the batteries are lithium ion. These are lithium-ion, lithium phosphate iron.
Perfect, thank you.
No further public comments on this item.
Okay, first off, thank you to our... Oh, yeah. It's all right, you can come up and speak.
This item can?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Greg, yes.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name's Greg Wade. I'm the CEO of Clean Energy Alliance, Deputy Mayor and Mayor White and council members. First, I want to thank Councilmember Joe Garcia for his past service on our board and former, or current, member of our board, Kristen Garcia. You guys are well represented on CEA, your community, and I want to thank you guys for that. Here, just to basically tell you, we are the clean energy provider, the renewable energy provider for your area. We serve energy to the seven cities in North County San Diego, including Escondido, so we have a vested interest in this industry to ensure that renewable energy resources are brought to you guys, as well as safe renewable energy. We're committed to providing safe energy. I want to thank the Escondido City Council for taking a deliberate approach to this to ensure that your residents are safe and that these facilities are built responsibly and appropriately located. We pay, as has been previously stated, BESS plays a vital role in our renewable energy future. Currently, we have, especially in the springtime, we have solar energy well beyond that which can be stored and used. We curtail solar energy at a regular rate in the state of California with negative energy prices, so battery storage has to be a part of our future. That said, it also has to be safe to make sure that our communities and our residents are safe. We have, as has previously been stated, we've had a lot of advancements on the technology side. We currently see in the industry lithium-ion phosphate batteries being used, replacing the former nickel-magnes lithium-ion batteries. These latest iterations are much safer. They have a higher heat point for thermal runaway, and the technologies and the NFPA standards that have been adopted are making it much safer for these facilities. I also want to point out that the Escondido Battery Storage Fire, which happened last October, performed as it should in these instances. It was restricted to one of the 24 canisters or containers onsite and did not spread to adjacent properties, and so we are confident that the industry is moving in a direction that provides for public safety as well as this vital energy storage need. We also support option 3, as recommended by your staff. I also want to, oops, want to commend your staff. We met with them, our staff did, and they are very knowledgeable. They have done what you have asked them. They have become quite familiar with these regulations that are in place today and that will be in place in the future, and we look forward to continuing to work with them. So CEA does support option 3. We think the county's guidelines provide a solid framework for ensuring that these storage facilities are built safely and responsibly and appropriately located, and we also would ask, if it's the comfort of the council, to consider the suspension of the moratorium, if that makes sense. As I said, we firmly believe that the measures in place today are more than adequate to protect the interests of the community and the public safety. So thank you.
No further public.
Okay. Thank you, staff, for your dedicated work on this. I know this was kind of a big workload, and thank you for reaching out to so many people and organizations to work together on this. I had most of my questions answered through this week, with the exception of a couple. So, do we currently have any projects in the pipeline that have been affected by the moratorium?
Thank you for that question, Mayor White. So there currently is one project in the pipeline under review through Development Services through a conceptual review that was notified of the moratorium. However, they have not, they've been in resubmital through the planning process, meaning they received comments prior to the moratorium in effect and submitted prior to that. They received comments and they have not come back in a few months, so we're still waiting to hear back from them.
Okay, thank you. One of the other questions I had that I know staff is looking into is whether or not Escondido is the point of sale for the materials used to build the facility. If we were to adopt option 3, does that, how do we address the issue of placement? Because there are still some places we would not want to put these, so how does that get addressed?
Thank you for your question, Mayor White. I'm Levana Kradke, the Deputy Fire Marshal. So if we were to go with option 3, within the guidelines, there are very specific setbacks, placement requirements, depending on where it would be proposed, maybe in a more dense area or a high wildland area.
Okay.
So we would follow those guidelines.
Okay, perfect. One last thing, Ms. Schumacher, could I ask for you to come up again real quick? Because I think she stated what my personal recommendation would be after you said request to suspend the moratorium. Will you just list off all that stuff you did one more time? Because that's what I would recommend.
So, okay. So the three recommendations that we have, the first being to rescind the urgency ordinance, which is option B. The second is to direct staff to incorporate the county guidelines. That's staff recommendation, option 3. And then the third is to direct staff to incorporate minimum workforce safety standards for all stages of the BEST lifecycle, including installation, assembly, testing, commissioning, maintenance, repair, retrofitting, and decommissioning in the CFC update as described. And then, do you want the "as described"? Okay.
Well, just, you mentioned something about requiring licenses, certifications, all of that stuff as well.
Okay, so then we would request that the minimum workforce safety standards include using certified electricians for all electrical work, which would be to also use C-10 licensed contractors to do all electrical work. And then the second is to require that a minimum of 15% of the onsite certified electricians performing electrical work hold an ESAM tax certification.
Perfect, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Those would be my recommendations if the council wanted to move forward in that direction. You know, I know we said this last time, I don't think any one of us up here is just adamantly opposed to battery energy storage projects. This is the way that the state is going. One last thing was, so I spoke to Middle River Power earlier this week, and one of the things that they had mentioned was, you know, there's going to be rolling blackouts. We need battery storage in order to fulfill the needs of, you know, customers when the power goes out. My question is, what geographical area do these projects serve once they're in? Do we know that?
Thank you, Mayor White. That's a really great question, and it was a question that staff asked of many of the stakeholders that we spoke with. The short answer we received is there really isn't a way to guarantee that a facility located within a city boundary is providing energy to the finite city boundary. It all goes into the grid and supports grid efficacy.
So, okay, thank you for answering that question. That's about what I expected, and I guess the only other suggestion I would have for the council to consider then, if we're not guaranteed, you know, any of the power, it doesn't make sense for Escondido to have 20 battery energy storage facilities, so potentially to consider a cap on the total number within the city. And that'll conclude my questions. We'll move on to Councilmember Fitzgerald.
Yes, thank you. I'm in agreement with the mayor and the two speakers. A really good job by the staff, very thorough. So in reading through the staff report here, I really appreciated where you are creating, in the report it says you're creating the framework that reflects BEST practices and addresses safety concerns not yet fully captured in existing codes. And then you also stated, "Developing BEST guidance in response to the increasing complexity and potential hazards posed by energy storage technologies." So, does the county guidelines, do they include the flexibility to change the guidelines as technology changes with the battery storage?
Good question, thank you. Yes, they do, as does Fire Code. As adoptions or changes come, we are, we do have that flexibility and ability.
Okay. All right, that was my only question, thank you.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you for this. I know a lot of work went into this. I've spoken to quite a few people who have, have, you know, stake, different stakeholders throughout the city and throughout the area, so I appreciate the amount of work that went into this. So I have quite a few questions and comments, so I apologize. The first one is, will this, are we going to be looking at a general plan review anytime soon, and will that zoning implement part of this and how we're going to be looking at where potential battery storages can be zoned into?
Thank you for that question. There is an option. Council can direct staff this evening to explore or pursue a land use ordinance, which would address at the zoning level whether these facilities are permitted within certain zones. That isn't the staff recommendation due to resourcing, but it is an option the council could direct. It's something that would take a longer period of time to do or research, but it is an option available.
Okay, and that's going, that leads to one of my later questions. My concern too is that, you know, some of the land use that we're looking at, and I guess the reason why I ask this is because I want to see where are the potential sites that this is going to be developed on? Because I want to make sure that the land that we are using for these potential sites are not going to interfere with, with any type of other potential that does address our SEDs more productively? Meaning, are we making the best use of the land for, what is the best use of the land that we're going to be looking at? Are we going to, is battery storage the best use of land, or is there something else like ag tech? That's an example. So I want to make sure that we're looking into that. That's something that we need to be considering. One of the things I've been hearing over and over again that I get a little frustrated by is the job pitch that we were hearing. A lot of these jobs are temporary jobs, they're not permanent jobs. I know that a lot of battery storages, a lot of them are actually done remotely, and when we're looking at jobs, when every time that I've asked a different stakeholder about battery storage facilities, we're talking about less than half a dozen people are actually going to be employed full-time. And like I said, a lot of them aren't necessarily even in Escondido, so that is something that I'm, I have had in mind. What is the, my next question is, what is the tax revenue on this? And this is another pitch that I keep hearing. The tax revenue that we're looking at, when we're buying the battery storage, when we're buying battery storage and all the materials and everything, does that money stay in Escondido? Or how does the taxes, how are they, well, who gets the taxes on those purchases? And I'm not sure who I could direct that question to. Anyone?
I do not believe, we have some questions outstanding, but we do not have answers for those questions this evening.
All right, that's the other question I have. Mayor White, he did ask the questions, thank you to Ms. Schumacher. She mentioned the implementation of the safety standards regarding the installation, assembly, retrofitting, commission, decommission, and a few other ones. So I also would support that. I think if we are going to be looking at battery storage in the city, we have to have the highest level of safety, so I would also recommend that to our staff. I think that is really important. The other question that he had, that I also had, was the B, how much of the energy will be going towards Escondido residents? Again, the question that I, the answer that I keep hearing is that it goes to the grid, so thank you, Ms. Morones, for echoing that. And maybe this is a question for Mr. Wade regarding how does, if we're looking at a battery storage, are we looking at, and it goes into the grid, as they say, what does that mean? Meaning, is it in the immediate area surrounding it, or is it remote? Or how does, how does the grid work? If you're able to answer that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. So, when we look, think of these things, we think of them in two different ways. Utility scale or front-of-the-meter battery storage and the kind of project that we talked about in Escondido is a utility-scale battery storage system that connects directly into the grid, has to go through an interconnection process, and feeds the grid at large. And so that's the energy that provides support, stability to the grid, grid-wide, within the region. So there's no specific way to know where those electrons go for energy. We also support behind-the-meter battery storage projects that are oftentimes referred to as microgrids, which can be either behind the meter or in front of the meter. Behind the meter doesn't have the same interconnection, so it supports energy on-site. Oftentimes, we find those on large commercial projects, hospitals, schools, that provide solar and storage on-site. It's behind the meter, so it doesn't have to have an impact into the grid, and it does two things. It provides backup power for that facility, for that private property, and some constructs, and we're working with SDG and others to come up with a hybrid. And some constructs, and we're working with SDG and others to come up with a hybrid solution where you have both back-of-the-meter and front-of-the-meter, where you do both. You serve the load on the site during peak load demand, and then you also export some to the grid. So there's a variety of different constructs. The, I think the gentleman spoke before about microgrids. Those are very helpful to sustain grid reliability because they take that load off the grid, one that's being served by a battery, like a large hospital or a school. So all of those combined to provide that stability. But those are the kinds of nuances you see.
Okay, thank you so much. I really do appreciate that. My last, second to last question is, the staff resources that you had mentioned, I mean, it sounds like if we were to extend this, it does, it is going to require, depending on what we're looking at, going to take up a considerable amount of staff resources. From the feedback that you've gotten so far, are you looking at something that is going to be very resource-consuming, time-consuming at this point?
So, thank you for that question. I think both Levana and I can speak a bit to this. The staff recommendation is an attempt to find the most balanced approach from a resource standpoint. The CFC update is something that is mandatory, and we have to conduct regardless. And the San Diego County guidance is already developed, and we were a part of it from a stakeholder perspective. So that really is the synergy that is coming from staff's recommendation. I will, since fire would be the one spearheading that, I will let Levana chime in on the resource needs.
As Veronica mentioned, fire code is already going to have to be adopted. It's a process that we are going to start. So there's already staff and time that's set aside, devoted to that. So it shouldn't be too much more of a lift from staff, other than to use the guidance and any other recommendations from council to put that into our fire code.
And I guess that kind of goes into what I was right about to say. So, Ms. Maronis, you had mentioned before that, unless I heard incorrectly, that the county guidelines is kind of the base, and then the county does recommend that city provides their own specific regulations. When we're talking about that, what we have, the feedback we've provided so far, is that enough for city regulations specifically? Is that kind of what you're looking at, or are you looking for a little bit more?
So as far as the recommendation from staff, it would be to incorporate the county's guidance in final form, and not to create a city-specific set of regulation. It would be relying on the county's developed documentation. One, because it's already been developed, we were a party to that process, but also it allows for a integration of consistency between the county and the city of Escondido. So developers and applicants and regulatory stakeholders are aware of what to expect.
Okay.
If council were to direct staff to create our own specific regulations, that is something where we would need to assess that internally and return to council with resource needs.
Okay. Other than that, I do want to stick with, that's it for me. So I'm not sure if it's kind of more of an between option three or four that you had put on the staff documents. But the other thing is that there's also the urgency ordinance. I do want to look to maintain the urgency ordinance until the expiration of October 5. It says here that there's a note that the urgency ordinance may be extended another 12 months. Not looking to do that, but I do want to keep the ordinance. And then regarding the Assembly Bill grants the California Energy Commission authority to permit certain clean and renewable energy facilities, including best. So I do think that it's, until we have something more concrete, I would like to keep the urgency ordinance. But I think this is a good direction so far. And that's it for me. I'll stop talking. Thank you all.
I just have one follow-up question based off of what he just said. So the ordinance expires in October. With the, if we were to go with option three and including the other few recommendations that have been made, is that something that could be brought back before it expires?
That is correct. It could be rescinded at any point.
Perfect. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for all the work that you've done, and thank you to all the stakeholders for working with our city staff and for reaching out to us. I have received all your communications, and I appreciate all the recommendations. I do support option three, which is staff's recommendation. And I do support option B, which is rescinding the urgency ordinance, so ending the moratorium at this time. And I also support us having minimum workforce standards, those mentioned by Ms. Schumacher. I did have a question for Ms. Schumacher about that. You mentioned that, so you might, yeah, you might want to come up, that the county didn't address that for some reason? Could you share more about why that wasn't included, or what their feedback was on minimum workforce standards?
So, great question. And I do want to note that the minimum workforce standards are on 70 kilowatt hours and above, so I failed to mention that. So I do want to mention that for the record.
Thank you.
So, it's my understanding that they didn't address it because they were going to pursue addressing it later on.
Got it.
So, leave it there.
Okay, got it. So there wasn't opposition to it? It was just TBD?
That's right, yeah. And I will say that Escondido would be a real leader in this space.
Yeah. And, you know, considering that we did have a fire, and I understand that is why I supported, you know, the temporary pause, knowing that it would be temporary, and just being sensitive to our community. We have to listen to our community first, right? And the fact that there was a lot of questions and fear in the community. So I feel like this was a good pause. And it is important for us to have regulations in place that applicants can feel comfortable, you know, not have different ones in the city and in the county. So I like the idea of us lining up. And based on my colleague, Councilmember Christian Garcia's comments about being sensitive to where the placement of these facilities are, I'm assuming, because I did watch a little bit of what the county deliberations were when this item was discussed at the Board of Supervisors, there is mention of areas, appropriateness of areas for these best facilities. So that's part of the CFC or guidelines. So I believe that that concern, Councilmember, is embedded in that. Is that correct? So this means you can't put them anywhere? There's guidelines to where those can be permitted?
Correct. There's, like I said previously, there's setback guidelines, but there's also guidelines on where they can be located based on density or wildland areas. And then there's other various things depending on the size of the actual system.
Makes me feel better. I also think at the supervisor level, there'd be also hearing from constituents and hearing the same concerns that we're hearing here within our city residents. So I feel like, I do feel comfortable that that is being addressed within those guidelines. So I would support, and I believe, Mayor, you, I don't know if you motioned it, or you were just saying that you would support it, but I would support, again, option three, and then option B. And then one more question. You were very specific on the 15% of a certain certification. Is that a doable ask, 15%, or is that, you know, I mean, is that easy to achieve?
Great question. Interestingly enough, San Diego County and Imperial County, but mostly San Diego County, actually has the most skilled and trained ESAMTAC-certified electricians in the entire United States.
Great.
And the reason for that, obviously, is because of the foresight of the Electrical Training Institute and the instructors there. We did meet with our industry partners, the National Electrical Contractors Association, NICA, and we had a conversation with them about what they thought that they could do. And 15% was what we had all decided would be acceptable and that we could meet. That could eventually be increased over time, but 15% is really the minimum.
Okay, good. Because I guess what I was thinking is making sure that doesn't become a barrier.
We can meet that need. We can, us and the C-10 licensed contractors can meet that need now.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying that. So, Mayor, was yours a motion, or were you just saying that in your comments?
It was not a motion, but I do have a question. Are we just giving general feedback, or are we voting on this?
It's receiving file? It's provide direction, I thought.
Right, it's proposed, the staff report's proposed as giving direction to staff. But if you are able to make a motion and articulate it, you can make that motion and have it voted on. In other words, there's sufficient level of detail in the staff report that the public's on notice that this isn't a matter for your review.
We haven't heard from Councilmember Garcia yet. It seems like we're all pretty much in agreeance, with the exception of, my own personal preference would be to extend the moratorium till that is brought back to council, considering there's one applicant that may be affected who hasn't really been continuing their own process lately. So that would be my motion, is option three, with the recommendations that we made, and considering a cap potentially, and also extending the ordinance till it comes back.
But not necessarily October, right?
No, just whenever the item comes back. Because presumably, you'd adopt that, and we'd have our clear path forward. Okay, perfect. Thank you. And go ahead, sir.
If staff could interject with one piece of clarification regarding the minimum workforce?
Absolutely.
If the council makes a motion to direct staff, as discussed this evening, the understanding would be that as part of the fire code update, we would codify the minimum workforce standards. So that is staff's understanding at this point, based on the discussion I had.
Okay, the minimum workforce standards that Ms. Schumacher had stated?
That is correct.
As long as it gets us to where we want to go? Yeah, go ahead. Hold on. Okay. I was going to say, he hasn't spoke yet, and then I'll come back to you. Press your cue button. Or is it on?
It's on.
Perfect.
All right. So there's, pretty much, all my questions have been answered at this point. My concerns were the zoning residents, where there are a lot of residents that were very concerned. What kind of revenue was going to be created about that safety use in Escondido, minimum work standards, all those questions have been answered. So basically, where I'm at is I support, well, I seconded where we're at. So that's what I support, and that's really all I have to share. Otherwise, I'd be just repeating what everybody else has said. Thank you.
Can I ask my clarifying?
When I push it, it turns.
Okay, got it. Okay, it's on. I'm on. You turn me on now, not me turning myself on. Okay, so, okay, so just a question. So, the, just to understand what the motion and second is, it's to adopt option three, staff recommendation, with the inclusion of minimum workforce standards that Cory Schumacher detailed in her public comments, which goes beyond what the county does. So it swaps that language out. And then for option B, what is it that we're holding off on rescinding that? What are we waiting to come back to us?
Till we have some clear guidelines in place.
As far as, but I thought those were going to be the guidelines, the county?
Also want to consider the cap.
Okay, got it. So exploring what a cap would be?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
What the cap would, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so additional guidelines. It would be another layer of guidelines addressing cap, which is not addressed in the county guidelines?
A cap on the total number?
Right.
Yeah.
So that's not included? That's not, they don't have a cap?
They do not.
Has there been a discussion of a cap? So, yeah, I guess it would start at the county, because no one else is having this conversation. Interesting, okay. But, yeah, I would be open to discussing that then, and having it end before the 5th, so, soon. So that's a fair compromise. Okay.
Do you want to speak again, or you're good? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Would you like me to repeat the motion at all? Would that be helpful?
Just in case.
Just for everyone's identification.
Why not?
Okay, so it's a motion to retain the best moratorium, urgency ordinance until the item comes back to the council, when a cap on the total number of best projects has been established by the county, incorporate the San Diego County guidelines regarding best outline and staff recommendation three, and establish minimum workforce safety standards for all best projects, including 70 kilowatt hours and above for installation, assembly, testing, commissioning, maintenance, repair, retrofitting, decommissioning in the CFC update, require certified electricians for all electrical work who hold a C-10 license, require a minimum of 15% of onsite certified electricians performing electrical work hold an SMTAC certification.
This is why this week is municipal clerks' week, so thank you.
Is that everything?
Okay, all right. Perfect.
Perfect, okay. So, voting is open. Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, everybody, for participating in that one. We're going to take just a five-minute break. We'll go ahead and reconvene this meeting, and we will move on to item 11, which is our boards and commissions interviews. And with the permission of the city council, I would like to propose that two of the current public art commissioners, we skip their interviews, as there are three people interviewing and three seats open, unless there's any objection. They will get reappointed. So we'll, just for public art commission, we'll have Benjamin Mann come up. Is everybody all right with that? We're just going to skip the interview for Terry, Ryan, and Carol Rogers. And I asked for their permission. I can just snub them. And then, as we go through, we're going to do it the same format as last time. The speaker has five minutes. If you do happen to have a question for the applicant, please just put yourself in the queue, and otherwise, we'll move on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you like to start with Benjamin, or would you like to go in our order of starting with the Building Advisory Appeals Board?
That's fine. Let's do Building Advisory and Appeals Board. And just so everybody remembers, with your five minutes, please remember to answer the questions about relevant experience, knowledge of the board and commission, and your vision and goals for the city of Escondido. And right at five minutes, I'm going to have to cut you off. I'm sorry.
Great. Our first candidate, who's going to be coming up for Building Advisory Appeals Board, so just everyone knows Jonathan Day did reach out right before the meeting. He's unable to make it, so that means Michael Delaney will be coming forward.
Hello again. Thank you, guys, very much, for the opportunity to come and speak before you again. I think I'll actually start by saying that, you know, when I got to the Building and Advisory Appeals Board, I learned that I wasn't the most knowledgeable member there, but I came to learn a lot, thanks to Mr. McColl and Mr. Abramson, and following by their example. And of course, as with my previous board experiences, I've always brought my passion, both for the city of Escondido and, you know, its history and the people that inhabit it, to carry out my role. And, you know, even in the most recent meeting on January 22 for the building on North Beach Street, I won't go too much into specifics about that, where we unfortunately had to deny a specific property because it was zoned commercial and was being used in a somewhat diminished capacity as a residential area, I made sure to speak to the people afterwards about why I voted to deny the appeal, and what specific steps that they should take, in my opinion, to go about trying to remedy that. So I've, you know, taken every bit of passion that I have for this city in my capacity, trying to carry out my job as a member of the Building Advisory Appeals Board. And that's what I believe I bring to the table, once again, that and the experience that I've now begun to learn as I've spent some time in office in that capacity. So I suppose that's all I've got. I'll take any questions if you guys have them.
I do not see any questions in the queue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good one.
Thank you, Mike. Our next candidate is Austin Denman.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, esteemed city council. Very nice to be up here for the first time. I'll try and just kind of go through the questions up on the slides here, just kind of shoot from the hip in terms of experience. I think I would like to lean mainly on my technical sourcing knowledge. So just to go into my professional background a little bit, I've been in supply chain for about 10 years. My degree is a business degree, non-technical, and throughout my career, been at different startups involved in aerospace, software, that kind of thing. So it was a pretty tough bridge for me to sort of cross and get used to the technical side. In terms of the technical sourcing skills I have and being on this committee and this board, I think that it's really a mix of taking into account the sort of codes themselves, the appeals themselves, and making sure that there's a clear path forward. I think it's pretty critical to the appeal process, to make sure that any time there is an appeal or an issue, that may be a non-conformant code, it may be outside of the normal building materials, construction processes, that if something is held up, I normal building materials, construction processes, that if something is held up, I have a pretty strong background and experience in quantifying why that would be, and hopefully moving things forward. I can give you a little more about my career background in, in supply chain, but it mainly pertains to this because I would say the, the technical sourcing piece allows me to sort of bridge the learning curve that I know would exist here. I don't have a ton of breadth of knowledge in terms of building codes, I understand that there's obviously electrical plumbing, all kinds of mechanical codes that I would need to understand and learn about, and I'm extremely confident that I'd be able to tackle the learning curve no problem. And that's why I was kind of trying to make sure, I leaned on my prior employment experience here and let you know that's, that's sort of what I've done over my career. I started out with a very tactical procurement role, and over time of 10 years or so, I've gotten up to manage a much higher category spend, I'm managing about $10 million of annual spend right now in capital expenditure at a company called Commonwealth Fusions. So I think leaning on my sort of, I know it's a private company experience, but I think leaning on the experience would really give me a chance to help deliver value here. In terms of the knowledge of the board and commission, I believe that all these boards and commissions appear to me as like a pretty clear conduit from the general public to drive things for the city council in the right direction. So I see, obviously, understanding the appeals and the root cause for the appeals and the non-conformances, and helping just at least clearly, tangibly show why those exist, why things are getting held up, why there are appeals, and just driving to a final decision. So I think that that's a pretty, pretty big piece. And then on the vision and goal side of things, I think the, the long-term sort of outlook for Escondido is just growth. I think that's, you know, to look at everything high level, I've only been here about three years or so, but my wife and I are planting roots, and so any way I can get onto a board and commission and just really help drive change in the right direction, I know I have a lot of value to deliver. And so I think as I look at that long-term outlook for Escondido and the growth and the prospective growth there, it, it would be key to make sure that any of these appeals and issues in terms of building code are just moved forward, or like I said, if there is some type of stagnation, there's a really clear, clear root cause. And so I think I would be able to help deliver value in that way, being a conduit from the public, and really highlight why there might be building code issues popping up, and really just make sure things, things are moving and be a conduit that way. I think for, yeah, closing statement, I just really appreciate the opportunity, it's my first time in city hall, and I just really want to plant my roots in Escondido and help out any way I can. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Well, now we're moving on to library board of trustees. Our first applicant is Chantel Suarez-Savila.
Hey there. Good afternoon, good evening, I'm Chantel Suarez-Savila, and I come to you because I'm really excited to, of course, be considered for this position. I was actually a commissioner of the Historic Preservation Commission, where I got a little bit of commission experience there. Really enjoyed the opportunity to be in dialogue, to be collaborating with city staff and city council in that space. I bring over a decade of experience in nonprofit fundraising, including grants management, compliance, and tracking, as well as nonprofit leadership and community volunteerism. I have extensive experience in collaborative decision-making, navigating public-private partnerships, and especially censoring community voices in funding and policy decisions. I think these skills equip me to contribute meaningfully to the library commission by balancing strategic oversight with a strong commitment to inclusion of all folks in Escondido. As far as my knowledge of the board, or the commission now, you know, thankfully to pass, or to current commissioners now, John and Carolyn Clements, meeting with Reno prior to this, and participating already in some of the library meetings this year, right, we know that our library is going through a big transition, and so I'm excited to continue the progress of what the commission has already done, what library staff have already done, and how, you know, city staff and yourselves are already contributing to that process. So I'm excited to, to continue, just helping with that transition. I know that the library commission also has served as a sort of advocacy for, for the library itself. And I just want to say that, you know, extremely grateful for past leadership, your leadership in making sure that our library is a, is a safe place, is a space for imagination, and I'm excited for the, the transition that we're going through. And then as far as, you know, vision and goals, my vision is to strengthen the community through a library that serves as a hub of knowledge, imagination, and care. We know that libraries are more than just collection of books, there are spaces of learning, connection, and opportunity, and through this commission, I want to ensure our libraries remain well-supported, inclusive, accessible, especially during this time of transition. Serving the library commission is one way I hope to contribute to a more connected and equitable Escondido. So thank you for your time, if you have any questions for me, happy to answer them.
I see no questions in the queue, so thank you.
Thank you.
Then we'll be moving on to John Schwab.
Good evening, Mayor White, Deputy Mayor Martinez, and council members. So this is an entirely different way of doing this. This, I, I'm now ending, as you've, as you know, our terms are extended through the end of June, so I'm ending my sixth year on the library board of trustees. When I came on, Carolyn, of course, was the youngest member at that point, and I was the second youngest. And, and now I am, I am the oldest. And so it's been, I came on initially because I was very concerned about having a contractor run the library, and I wanted to make sure with my contracting experience from both Pacific Southwest Airlines and Roar Industries, that the contract was adhered to and we got good service. That turned out to be not what I ended up doing. LSNS has been fantastic, but they're just people that, you know, they've never mentioned money once, all they do is do a good job and try to help. So during the six years, I think we've become a more active entity, not just listening to monthly performance indicators. We've made some changes, we've gone to being a fine-free library, which really wasn't my goal. Initially, I had asked the then library director, Patricia Crosby, what's the best thing and the worst thing about this library? That was when I first came on. And she said, the best thing is the friends of the library, they're fantastic help. The worst thing is we're the only library in the whole freaking world that charges for books on CDs. I didn't look at the whole world, but I did look at every, 13 libraries in Southern California, from LA, Orange County, Riverside County ourselves, and, and she was absolutely correct, nobody charges for books on CD. And I talked to our finance department, that was a whole $5,000 a year in revenue, and I put the numbers together and took them to the board, and we voted to get rid of that, took that to Jeff Epp, and he agreed. And when we put the new system in from the Polaris library system two years later, turns out they couldn't handle rentals anyway because nobody else had them, we had rentals for CDs at that point. And so we moved that off. We've also made a lot of changes. The reason I'm here tonight is because there's some, some real things going on, as you're all aware of, we've got the $10 million grant, $1 million grant from the state, the city got, and we're trying to get the library service up and running, up and running later this month from the mall, where it'll be for the next six months to a year as the library's been renovated. I'd like to stick around and, and make sure that process goes through as well as it should, and also look towards the future of our collection budget, which has remained unchanged for, since we've started, with LSNS in 2017. And there's just a few things left to do that I'd like to stay involved with, and I believe that my experience with the board will help all the new members, and I'm glad to continue to do that.
Thank you, John, there's no questions in the queue. Appreciate your service. Quick question while the next applicant comes up. Is Giselle currently on the library board?
No, she is not, new candidate. With that being said, we'll move on to the public art commission, and that'll be Benjamin Mann.
Good evening, Mayor White, Deputy Mayor Martinez, council members and staff. My name is Benjamin Mann, I come to you tonight to speak about my application for the public art commission. I'd like to start by telling you a little bit about myself. First off, I'm an audio engineer. I have lived in Escondido for the last 10 years, for the last 12 years, I have worked for the California Center for the Arts Escondido Foundation. I currently hold the title of Director of Event Operations, and in short, I oversee performing arts, which includes theater rentals, concessions, front-of-house, ticket office, as well as our in-house programming through our presented season and community events. I'm actually working on finalizing the details for the Independence Day festival right now, so excited about that. That is actually the seventh title I've held for the foundation, which is a bit of a running joke at this point. I started as a stage technician intern in 2012, where upon graduation, I joined IATC 122, which is the San Diego Stagehand Union. For the next six years, I worked as the house crew at the CCAE, starting as the assistant audio engineer, and then ending up as the head audio engineer for the facility, before moving into technical production management, where I actually ended up overseeing the same stage technician internship that I had graduated from. I'm proud to say that a number of my interns have led successful careers in the industry and are now working at the Old Globe, and the La Jolla Place, and the Menave Center up in San Jose, so that's always been very exciting for me. On, through my years on house crew, I also worked on the bounce-a-lot, which is a not-so-eloquent way of saying that I've worked at almost every venue in the county. I've worked, any type of production you can think of, from Madonna at the San Diego Sports Arena, to former President Bill Clinton, and current President Donald Trump on the 2016 presidential campaign, to the cultural, culturally and theatrical masterpiece that is Jimmy Buffett's Margaritaville, which premiered at La Jolla Playhouse before going to Broadway. I have bumped into John Cena with a ladder, I have been featured on Selena Gomez's Snapchat, and most importantly, I have fist bumped Justin Bieber. All of that to say, out of all of my professional experience, all of the multimillion-dollar productions I've worked on, the most impactful work that I've been able to do is actually here in the city of Escondido. My understanding is that the public art commission serves the community services department, and offers insight, and helps guide the public art initiatives. It's also my understanding that this council voted to put in place a strategic plan for public art, to act as a roadmap for the commission. I think my experience in live entertainment, event management, and production would lend itself to the commission. Sorry, if you can tell, I live my life backstage, so I'm not the best public speaker. I had the joy and privilege to attend and participate in a number of the Arts Culture and Creativity Month events last month, and I got to see firsthand the impact that accessible arts programming has in our community. And it's, I think Suzanne with Escondido Aliart, I think the tile of her new mural that was displayed as part of the, the event that month kind of sums it up nicely, which is community unity. Looking forward, I would like to personally see more advertising for art and arts events and cultural events in the city of Escondido. I think, looking at the city of San Diego as an example, they've put in place an arts and culture district to help fund public initiatives like that, and I think there's, you know, the roadmap's already there locally, I think we can adapt it to work within our community. I think this has already been discussed previously, but it's something that I think we should definitely investigate further. And additionally, I think we, I would like to see more representation of Escondido history and agriculture in public art initiatives. Like many other people, my family has deep-rooted ties to agriculture and farming, and so I would like to see more representation of that locally. There are a good, couple good examples, like the Orange Grove and the adjacent mural on the CCA campus, and a number of the utility boxes feature grapes and citrus and avocados. But especially with the expansion of like the AgX, the AgTech Center, I think it would be neat to maybe have a public art initiative with agriculture as the subject matter. Thank you for your time.
If appointed, could you guarantee to bring either Selena Gomez, Justin Bieber, or John Cena to Escondido?
I will do my best.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Benjamin. With that being said, we'll move on to the Transportation and Community Safety Commission. Our first applicant is David Cazares.
Good evening, my name's Dave Cazares. I was here in January applying for something else, and so it's nice to see you all again. Congrats, Zach. If you recall, I'm the state detective that investigated insurance fraud and financial crimes for the state for the last 19 and a half years. And I said I was gonna retire, and I did, last week. And so I have a lot of extra time to offer the city council, I want to contribute back to the community. And I just wanted to say, in preparation for this interview, I interviewed a former Escondido police officer who worked the streets here for 10 years. And I also went to the last commission meeting for this, the Transportation and Community Safety Commission, and I also spoke to the chairperson, Lori Hatley, afterwards. So I learned a lot, and I'll get back to that later, but getting back to my experience, back in the police academy, I took traffic reporting and accident reconstruction, and I can't say, it was a long time ago, so I can't say I remember everything, but I do remember it was the hardest class in the entire academy, because there's a lot to it. And I also drove a take-home state vehicle for 25 years, so I spent a lot of time on the road, and I've seen a lot, seen the traffic get, get worse, seen the drivers get crazier. So I've seen a lot, and as part of my job investigating auto insurance fraud, I've read a lot of traffic collision reports, and then interviewed the officers regarding those reports. So I, I know what to look for in that. I know what's important there. So that'll help me contribute, you know, I'll know, I know the terminology, I know what the focus is. When I went to the, the meeting, the commission meeting, I think it was on April 10th, I understood what they were talking about, and there was a consultant there and city staff going over a lot of, you know, speed limits and intersections and all that, and I pretty much understood everything, I found it very interesting. My knowledge of the commission, well, it's obviously, it's an advisory role to the city council, to the traffic engineer, to the engineering of the city, and of course, for the police department. And why does, why would the commission affect the, affect the community? Because all the people I just mentioned don't have time to go over all the details involving, you know, traffic congestion and accidents in the city. So when I went to this meeting, I was really interested because they were, they were poring over intersections and streets and things like that, and I found it very interesting. For example, one of them was, you've probably all been on it, because all the traffic app- all the traffic apps take you by it, the Gamble Street. And I found when I got here 10 years ago, I was going too fast also. It's just something about that little street, you know, in between El Norte and, anyway. So my vision for Escondido and goals, to make it an attractive city that will attract young families to move here and buy a home, and will attract businesses to come here, because you've got to have a tax base. That's what it's all about in order to survive. And in order to attract those folks, you have to have a safe city. And I would do anything I could to make our city safer. You know, that includes visiting problem areas, doing a little surveillance of those areas, what's going on there, interviewing complainants and, you know, police officers. In closing, I'd like to tell you about a little story, a conversation I had with my wife when we first moved here. You know, when you first move to a new city, you're getting a lay of the land, what stores and restaurants are there, and she was always going to Jimbo's, the grocery store. And we live in East Grove, and it's across town. And I kept telling her, "Why are you always going to Jimbo's? There's a Vons and there's a Ralph's right here, you know, minutes away." And she finally asked why I kept asking that, and I told her, "Because, you know, there's a lot of traffic here, and there's a lot of accidents. And, you know, you're just exposing yourself by having to go all the way across town and back." And I kind of wish she would stay local, but the fact of the matter is, she still goes to Jimbo's, she went today, and I still have the concerns about her safety on the road. So, in closing, I'm just saying I would do anything I can to give back to our community and help in any way I can. Thank you. Any questions?
No, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Our next candidate is Austin Denman. And a reminder for the city council, as it pertains to the Building Advisory and Appeals Board, that is the one board that, if appointed to, candidates can serve on simultaneously as another board. Just want to leave you with that. So, Mr. Denman?
Hello again, esteemed city council. I think I'll kind of do the same thing as last time, just try and go through the questions you guys provided. In terms of my personal experience in regards to being on this commission, I think the biggest piece I can kind of draw from was my supplier sourcing and supplier onboarding side of my career. So, when people hear that, they assume I'm doing a lot of financial and commercial analysis, which is definitely part of selecting a supply base in the jobs I've been part of. But another huge, huge part of that is actually auditing and understanding the safety side as well. So, I understand very well and have captured in my professional experience the need for safety infrastructure, for process safety. Have worked in a pretty wide variety of industries that do require very strict process safety protocols. So I think I do have a bit of a passion and a drawing towards understanding the traffic safety issues and the community safety issues as well. In terms of my knowledge of the board and commission, from what I can understand, it's pretty essential for, you know, providing suggestions to the people making the decisions in terms of traffic engineering in the city council, to make sure that traffic enforcement laws can be followed, and that everything is flowing in an efficient manner, obviously. I think another really big part of the scope of this commission that interests me a lot, and maybe isn't the first thing on your mind when you hear of it, would be the pedestrian and schools own safety as well. I think that's a very exciting scope that this commission can help sort of improve and build out around the city. It's pretty near and dear to my heart. My wife is here with me, and we're expecting our first little one here in about six weeks. So, around school zones and just pedestrian safety is a very, very, you know, near and dear to my heart issue. In terms of the vision and goals for Escondido, I think, just to rewind a little bit from my last time up here, and just give everyone a sense, I know, I think most folks in here are probably, you know, from the area, maybe born in Escondido. I've only been here, my wife and I, for about three years, bought our first home in Escondido, but really just have fallen in love with it, and really in the last year or so have decided, we're here to plant roots and start a family. So, I think that the vision of a safe and efficient traffic system is critical to really building out the city and the growth of the city. I'm really passionate about sort of the new business development side and the economic development side, but I think you can't do all that if there's issues with commuting and traffic and transportation around the city. So, I think that's a big, big piece of this for me personally, and can definitely deliver some value. I think the big takeaway as well is that, you know, as my wife and I start to, you know, start our family here and set roots in Escondido, it's critical that, you know, whoever I might be concerned about can just walk the streets and drive the streets, excuse me, in a safe and effective manner. So, I think that's, you know, a pretty big personal skin in the game I have for this particular commission. Any questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Austin. Our next candidate will be Thomas Park.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor White, Deputy Mayor Martinez, and council members. My name is Tom Park. My wife and I moved to Escondido in 1989. I've raised two daughters here.
Would you lower your mic just a little bit? Yeah, just so we can hear you. Yeah, there you go.
I'm not a public speaker. So, I moved here with my wife in 1989, raised two daughters in the Escondido school system. I'm a retired software engineer, and I'm here to interview for that Safety Transportation Committee. My relevant experience is, I've lived here for 30 years. I'm familiar with the community and traffic status that's been going on. In my experience to work, I've had to deal with a lot of diverse individuals. I've had to work with people in foreign countries, manage projects all over the place. I have 10 years' experience as a president of a large HOA, so I've had to deal with people in those type of situations. Let's see here. I think I can contribute with my experience because I have good team-building experience. I'm an engineer, so I approach things with an engineering mindset. I have common sense approach to things. What does the commission do? I've gone through the, what we have online and looked, I haven't gone to any meetings, but I've read all this stuff for the last year or so, and it looks like you're reviewing traffic studies, you review traffic complaints, you recommend ways to improve traffic conditions, you're reviewing recommendations for safety improvements, and review conditions and recommendations for pedestrian safety, all things that I'm interested in. So, let's see, how does the Safety Transportation Committee affect the community? Well, we all have to be, I think the safety is an important thing of everything in Escondido. And so, one of my goals is to, you know, when I think, support the traffic and safety in Escondido, I have, oops, go to the thing here. There's a couple things that, having lived here for a long time, that are concerns of me. I live near Bear Valley Parkway, and there's several schools that are right off that road. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic that has to cross the road and go through there. There's also roads that are off of Bear Valley that have no lights for turn lanes, like for instance, on Idaho Road, which is a dangerous intersection, because I've seen accidents at that particular place. It also concerns me that the transportation should be careful on that area because of the way it widens, and it's county, half-county and half-city, so there's a lot of interest there. Center City Parkway, there's a lot of new condos and building going on in that area. Should be careful about pedestrian and traffic issues there. Just, those are a couple examples. Some of the things that are concerned to me, I have strong support for the police and firefighters, so as a safety measure for that, I support anything in that arena. I think the city should be concerned with homelessness, and as a safety person, I think we need to make sure that there's pedestrian safety, and that there's access to public transportation, and that we don't do any problems there. And the support, I'd like to see Escondido grow as a person who's lived there for a long time. So, I think making sure that we have safe and good transportation with all the new housing that's getting built is an important factor. Escondido is growing, and I'd like to keep safe traffic flow for pedestrians as an important task. I want to give back to the community. I believe I can be an asset and a valuable contributor, and so I'd ask your vote in letting me join the Safety and Transportation Committee. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. There are no questions in the queue. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Tom. Our next candidate is Bruce Roder. Then we'll be moving on to the Planning Commission. Our first candidate is Sabrina Covington.
You know, I like to bring my own cheerleader to these events. Good evening, Honorable Mayor White, Deputy Mayor Martinez, and esteemed council. It's, I feel like I'm in good company. It's always a pleasure to be here. My name is Sabrina Covington, and I am passionate about how thoughtful planning can shape not just our city's appearance, but its sense of identity and possibility. I'm here because I care deeply about the future of Escondido, and want to be a part of the conversations and decisions that will help it thrive. In answer to the three questions, relevant experience, while I may not come from a traditional planning background, I bring a unique perspective rooted in community engagement, design, business, and sustainability. I've worked in roles that require balancing long-term vision with practical realities, and I know how to navigate differing viewpoints to find common ground. I also understand the importance of listening, especially to voices that don't always show up at the table. I believe this blend of creative thinking, collaboration, and civic commitment would make me an effective and thoughtful commissioner. In regard to my knowledge of the board and commission, the Planning Commission plays a critical role in translating our city's values into physical space. Through decisions about land use, zoning, housing, transportation, and more, it's where the city's big-picture plans meet the day-to-day realities of growth and development. I see the commission as a guardian of Escondido's future character, making decisions that impact everything from how inclusive our neighborhoods are, to how resilient we are in the face of environmental and economic change. Visions and goals, my vision for Escondido is a city that grows intelligently, balancing innovation with respect for our history and community fabric. I'd love to see a city where walkable neighborhoods, small businesses, green spaces, and diverse housing options are a part of a holistic plan, not just wishful thinking. As a planning commissioner, I would advocate for a smart, inclusive development, listen closely to community concerns, and help ensure that Escondido remains not just a great place to live today, but a place where future generations can thrive. In conclusion, thank you for considering my application. I'm excited about the opportunity to contribute to the future of Escondido, and to serve in a way that brings curiosity, integrity, and a strong sense of civic responsibility to the table.
Thank you, Sabrina. We do have one question from the deputy mayor.
Hi there. Thank you for applying. And I'm going to ask, I'm going to be fair and ask all the planning commissioners this question. So, planning commission is, you know, a lot of time, and they have more meetings than our other commissions, so there's more involved, which is why I'm asking this question. As far as development goes, can you give me an example of what you would consider a good development in our city, and maybe one that you are not a fan of?
That's a great question. So I had a conversation with someone who was here earlier about Palomar Heights, and the question that was directed to me, in reference to me applying this to this position, was, "Why isn't there green space in front of Palomar Heights like the hospital had?" So, my comment to that person was that I can see why a development like that doesn't have green space, and all of the, you know, recreation spaces on the interior. And I encouraged that person to also look at that development at night, because I think it looks really great. Actually, the decorative lighting that they have out front is really enjoyable to drive by in the evening. So, I'm in favor of the Palomar Heights development, although it is quite large and changing the city significantly. I love the foot traffic that it will bring to, especially the downtown area. As far as a development I wouldn't be in favor of, nothing specific comes to mind, but if that does, I will certainly reach out. I know, I work, I am the broker of Hanson Realty, which is involved in some large developments. And I was having conversations with one of our key agents there, you know, they go, my agent Paul Van Eldren helped develop the Auto Parkway, so he's in his 80s, so he's working on, they're working on a large development on El Norte at the 15, and another development at Center City, and I want to say 13th across from Sprouts. So I was in those conversations today, so, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Our next candidate is Michael Delaney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, and council members. This time, I think I'm going to start by describing my vision for Escondido. Since 2010, San Marcos has grown by about 14%, while we've been closer to about 10%. And while I don't see that as a mutually exclusive thing, it's not a, you know, dog-eats-dog world, I believe that, you know, as much as is in our capacity, we must try to promote as much growth as we can. Recently, and I was just talking to Mr. Gustafson about this, I've been working on the campaign for John McCann, who's running for county supervisor in the South Bay. And I used to always tell people, and I hope, Mr. Mayor, you won't take offense at this, that John Franklin, in my estimation, was the best mayor in San Diego County, because when he took office, he went about creating task forces to deal with homelessness and with retail theft and that kind of thing. He was, for lack of a better term, an activist in local government. When I started working on the John McCann campaign, and I heard about some of the things that he's done in terms of some of the affordable housing programs that he's done down there, multifamily housing units and that kind of thing, as well as the Gaylord Pacific, it was really eye-opening to see somebody who was proactive rather than reactive in response to the community's needs. We've been dealing with, we're somewhat insulated in compared to, you know, some of the other cities in San Diego, the housing crisis. And having a mayor, as well as a council and a planning commission, and I understand that previous planning commissions have been somewhat hobbled in this regard, dealing with, you know, trying to pass more housing programs and that kind of stuff, it is my view that we need to be able to be proactive in trying to stem that problem. For the citizens of this city, for the younger folks like me, who are trying to start a family here in Escondido and that kind of thing, trying to become homeowners and take out mortgages, it's very hard to do in Southern California. So, my view is that we need to do everything that we can on the local level, because I do believe having a locally proactive government does matter, as I'm sure all of you agree, having a locally engaged community, where we have our ears far closer to the ground than, you know, any congressman, or anybody who lives or works in a, you know, building far away, you know. We actually, on occasion, get yelled at by the community. And I care deeply about Escondido. I've knocked on doors in three of the city council districts, all but one, you know. And that's because I care about this community, and I hope, in closing, that I can have the opportunity to give back to that city that I've called home for so many years. So, thank you very much. And now, Consuelo, I know you have that question. I had some time to think about, in terms of, you know, good projects. I like the Latitude apartments that are down there. Those were not there when we moved here. I can't think of a specific, I hope this doesn't suggest a lack of imagination, but development that I'm not fond of. I was thinking that Auto Parkway is like somewhat on the more industrial side, but you need certain amounts of industry. And even then, there's, you know, a decent amount of green space, like by the old Five Guys. So I hope that doesn't suggest a lack of imagination. I like to, my brother goes to Berkeley. They have a lot of different types of architecture there. When we were touring it, they had a brutalist architecture structure for one of their buildings. They had New Imperial. They had Art Deco, which is my personal favorite. So, I do like a bit more ostentatious design. So I do like a bit more ostentatious design, for lack of a better term. My family comes from the East Coast, in my, you know, in my preference, architecturally speaking. But I can't cite a specific example in Escondido that I'm opposed to, so I hope that that doesn't suggest a lack of imagination. But many of the programs, many of the developments that we've had recently, I've been very fond of.
I'm going to encourage you to wrap it up, sir.
Well, thank you guys very much for your time. I hope I haven't been too vociferous and I hope that you guys will give me the opportunity to give back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for answering my question.
Thank you, Michael. Next candidate is Austin Denman.
Okay. Hello again, esteemed city council. I'll try and keep this one relatively short. I'm sure you're getting somewhat tired of my, my time here. But I think this is honestly the seat I'm most interested in. I know, subjectively, I've heard this is obviously the most coveted seat for the boards and commissions, at least from what I've heard a little bit. And I just wanted to, I guess, first point out that, similar to some of the other career experience I've talked about, I, I've had a pretty wide breadth of, of experience in the supplier sourcing and strategic sourcing direction side of things to help drive a long-term growth in decisions. So, like I mentioned in my current role, I have a much wider breadth of responsibility and that's helping drive decisions for the entire company on a longer time scale. These aren't short-term decisions and quick supplier A being cheaper than supplier B. These are long-drawn-out critical decisions. And so I'm hoping I can apply some of that to being on the Planning Commission. I'm very interested in trying to cultivate economic growth in the city and I think a lot of that starts from the, the land use and the planning commission side of things. In terms of knowing what the commission actually does, I mean, I know there's a lot of, you know, we're viewing various development proposals, all kinds of applications for land use, conditional use permits. Same thing I mentioned in the Building Advisory and Appeals interview. It's going to be a bit of a learning curve, but I'm very confident I can tackle it. And so it's something I'm personally very interested in. I also, to talk a little bit, I guess, about long-term growth, I also worked at SpaceX for a few years and I was there from, about 2015 to 2019. And so you talk about a trajectory or a takeoff, that was like a pretty critical time to be there and a lot of decisions that I helped drive and make, I'm, I'm confident that, you know, we're involved in the success, at least on the tooling side of that company. So I think that's how I can draw from my own personal experience. And then in terms of the vision and goals, I think the same thing anyone else has kind reiterated here, I think just the boom growth in Escondido, there's a ton of potential here. I think it's a very diverse and hardworking community that if you can harness some of the economic growth and drive it in the right way, I think it does start with sort of the zoning and use side of things. So I'd be really excited at the chance to try and drive some of that home. On the question from deputy mayor, I think it's probably the most cliche answer of all time, but love Kid Carson Park. It's a couple minutes from my house and I go there all the time. So whatever the city did with the planning and the setup for Kid Carson is just, it's incredible space to me. In terms of a negative, I would say, I'd hope I don't offend anyone if they were in the planning for this, but there is a new set of homes coming up over on Bear Valley, not far from Bear Valley and Sunset or so. I think there might be Lennar Homes, but the, the traffic flow there seems pretty hectic and crazy and so I would say that, that area, that zone is just a little bit tough for me to wrap my head around at times.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you, Austin.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. Our next candidate is Corey Gustafson.
Thank you for having me. Thank you, Mayor White, Deputy Mayor Martinez, Councilman Garcia, and Councilwoman Fitzgerald. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight to talk about the Planning Commission. I'm a lifelong citizen of Escondido. I've lived here almost my entire life. I'm a small business owner. I own a small brewery. I also ran for public office here in Escondido, parts of Escondido. Over 9,000 people voted for me in Escondido, so I think that I've come into this position from a position of leadership, of trust, of the folks in this committee, community, thinking that I have the vision to help grow and expand Escondido. And, but I think what we need on the Planning Commission is the ability to carry out the vision of you, the elected officials. You are the ones who are carrying out the will of the people and I think that it's the Planning Commission's job to carry out the vision that you guys put forth for Escondido. The people elected you and the Planning Commission should do its best to bring your vision to fruition in Escondido. Also, that vision includes creating housing, right? We need more housing in Escondido. We need more middle-class housing and reach the goals that have been put forth for Escondido by the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Commission. We need to have more housing. I'm a first-time homeowner, I just bought a house and I know how difficult it is trying to buy a house in Escondido. My friends are going through the same thing. So I think what the council has done here, putting forth a vision of affordability, is something that the Planning Commission really needs to focus on. But while you build, you should also respect property rights of my fellow citizens and also look to keep Escondido, Escondido, right? We want to respect the great, maintain the city's great character. And then finally, I'm a small business owner. I've been in front of planning commissions before from the other side, trying to get my projects through. And sometimes it's difficult. Sometimes it's difficult, where sometimes you think that people on planning commissions inside government are trying to say no, right? Instead of trying to work with you to get to yes. Small business owners in Escondido are trying to create jobs for their families, for trying to create jobs for people throughout Escondido. They're the backbone of our economy here in Escondido and I think the Planning Commission should be trying to work with folks to be able to open up new businesses, to build new houses. So I think that that is kind of the vision of what I would like to do on the Planning Commission, but understanding that the Planning Commission is there to carry out the vision of what you, the elected officials, put forth in Escondido. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Corey Gustafson.
Okay, thank you. Your name sounds familiar. Okay, now, now your name sounds familiar. Yeah, when you said you had run for office, I'm like, I've heard that name.
You might have voted for me.
I remember hearing your name, so. Don't remember my name. But if you could answer the question that I had asked the other applicants for Planning Commission, something that you consider a good, you know, I'm sure there's more than one, but an example of, of a good development you support and one that maybe you aren't a fan of.
Well, look, you go into these things with an open mind, with the information that you have available to you when you're going through the process. And like I said, it's not about what I think is good or bad, it's about looking to what the rules are, what the vision of this council is, and going by that, right? I'm not going to come in with preconceived notions of what could, what good projects there are or what bad projects there are. I think that there are, is fundamental agreement from people in Escondido of where we need to go and that's the council's job to lay out for us. So that's my answer to your question. I don't know if you'll be happy with that, but it's what I believe.
I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your time. Yep.
Our next candidate is Peter Hester.
Good evening, Mayor White, Deputy Mayor Martinez, Manager McGlynn, Attorney McGinnis, and Clerk Beck. I haven't heard those three names, so I wanted to make sure and mention those tonight. And the remainder of council, thank you so much for this opportunity to come before you and, and for considering me for the Planning Commission. By way of introduction, I would like to mention that I have a fabulous wife of 38 years this year. I have three college graduate children and eight grandchildren. And why do I mention this? I mention this, one, because I'm proud of those accomplishments, but also because I want to emphasize my commitment to family. And really, that's what supporting our community is all about. It's family and being able to support families and commerce in, in industry within our, our borders. I'm also an Escondido resident and homeowner for 10 years. And I am general, excuse me, genuinely excited about the possibility of serving in this capacity and contributing to the thoughtful growth and future of our community where all families can enjoy a wonderful quality of life. And I'll proceed, at five minutes, I'll proceed right to question one. Throughout my career, I've been fortunate to hold leadership roles and serve as chairperson on several professional boards. I managed in office purchasing and contract services for the San Diego Community College District that was responsible for $1.5 billion in voter-approved bond funds and also an additional $350 million in general expenditures annually. I, I managed that department successfully. We expended those funds under budget and, and on time and I'm very proud of that accomplishment. These experiences have taught me the value of collaboration, clear communication, and long-term planning. I've worked to bring people together, led initiatives that make a difference, and helped organizations operate effectively and sustainably. My background in management has given me the tools to thoughtfully navigate complex challenges, make balanced decisions, and always keep the greater good in focus. I care deeply about transparency, responsible governance, and being a part of a solution that reflects our shared values and vision. I believe my experience and perspective can add a real value to the work ahead. Question two, I believe the Planning Commission plays a vital role in shaping the future of our city. It helps guide how Escondido grows and evolves, ensuring that changes to land use and development align with the quality of life standards that's set forth in the general plan. From reviewing subdivision maps and conditional use permits to hearing appeals and recommending thoughtful updates to our general plan and zoning policies which follow the perimeters of Proposition S, which was voter-approved back in 1998, I believe, the commission is at the heart of how we plan for a strong, balanced future. What makes this work so meaningful is the latest, is the lasting impact it has on our community. Every decision influences how neighborhoods take shape, how we use and preserve our resources, and how we maintain the unique character that makes Escondido feel like home. It's about making sure development supports our quality of life, fosters economic opportunity, and protects the livability of the city for generations to come. By approaching these decisions with long-term vision, the commission helps ensure that the growth happens in a reasonable, sustainable way. Question three, my vision for Escondido is deeply rooted in the same values the city embraces, a vibrant, inclusive, and sustainable community where people of all backgrounds feel at home and have an opportunity to thrive. I imagine a city that continues to grow thoughtfully while honoring the unique characteristics and natural beauty, a place where families can find quality housing, students have access to great education, local businesses flourish, and cultural and recreational opportunities bring us together. To me, Escondido is a community full of potential. I believe strategic, balanced planning is essential to protecting what we love about this city while preparing reasonably for the future. As a member of the Planning-
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry to cut you off there. I'm going to turn the time over to, to the deputy mayor who has a couple of questions for you.
What project, project do I like? I am really fond of a lot of the projects that are underway. The beautification of Grand, I'm really supportive of, I think it looks great. But also the Costco at the mall, I think that's a real economic boom for the city because that's a project that will attract consumers from outside of the city and bring additional tax revenue into the city. I do support the housing complex at the old Palomar Hospital site. I, I think affordable housing is desperately needed and I applaud council in the city for seeing through that process and bringing housing to the city of Escondido. As far as projects I don't like, I really can't put a finger on any I don't like, but in general, I would say any projects that adversely tax the resources of the city or that are misplaced in a community where it would be unfit. I think it's important that, as I mentioned in my statement, that it's important that we evolved in a balanced capacity where the infrastructure supports the projects and furthers our values in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. There are no further candidates for interviews this evening. They're the outstanding candidates.
Any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay. Okay. First off, thank you to each and every one of you. It seemed like the first couple of times we did this after I got on the council, it was a lot of the same faces, which is not a bad thing, but it's great to see a lot of new faces express interest in participating in part of local government. With respect to the Planning Commission and the Transportation and Community Safety Commission, I would ask that my colleagues send me their top two or three choices for those. Right now, I think it'd be appropriate to go ahead and appoint Benjamin Mann, Carol Rogers, and Terry Ryan to the Public Art Commission, as well as Austin Denman and Michael Delaney to the Building Advisory and Appeals Board. With respect to the Library Board of Trustees, did Giselle happen to say if, why or if she missed it?
Unfortunately, I did not receive a message from her regarding not coming this evening.
Okay. Then I think it's appropriate to also appoint John Schwab and Chantel Suarez-Zavilla to the Library Board of Trustees. Yeah, go ahead. I'm going to turn it on to discussion. There you go.
Okay. So then, I, so one of the things that I did see in, there was a couple applicants, we're having interviews, are those interviews for any boards that you're suggesting we appoint for now, Mayor? People who couldn't make it?
Oh, I don't even know.
Who? The only exception to that would be for the Public Art Commission is Leila Sackfield did apply for that.
Okay. But I thought there was another person who-
Lori Hatley, but as I understand it, that's not being recommended to have an appointment for the Transportation-
Oh, I guess, I just didn't see the names on here, so I assumed these were all the candidates. So make up interviews with Lori. Okay, well, let's do this. Lori was Transportation and Community Safety. Let's, man.
Yeah, I think, I think because I had heard, so, so our city clerk sent an email saying that there was going to be an additional set of interviews for people who couldn't be there today. So that's why I was confused as to us kind of getting ahead of that.
Yeah, no doubt. Thank you for pointing that out. So let's hold off on everything except for the Building Advisory and Appeals Board. We can appoint Austin Denman and Michael Delaney to that.
Because there's three vacancies and three applicants? Am I correct?
Two seats. I'm comfortable with these two. I know Mr. Day, but I'm comfortable with these two if everybody else is.
Oh, got it. So there's two seats and three applicants, but one didn't show up.
Correct.
So you're saying the two who showed up-
He also applied for-
And Mr. Day also applied for the Transportation Commission, so he would be invited to that interview.
Okay, got it. So you're saying, Mayor, just to make sure I'm clear, we're going to hold off on the other ones, but appoint, say the names again?
Austin Denman and Michael Delaney.
For the, and then Michael Delaney is already on Building Advisory, right? So we'd be renewing his term.
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I would support that.
Okay. Sorry for the confusion.
That's okay. I'll second that.
Let's do that. Any other questions or comments?
And then we're still sending you, we're going to wait to do this, the additional interviews and then send you our recommendations?
You can send them to Zach anytime you need.
Thank you. And for clarification, please send them to myself just for Brown Act purposes. That would be great.
Yes, we will, we will do that. We don't want to violate the Brown Act, definitely.
All right. There's a motion and second. Let's vote. And thank you again to everybody who expressed interest. We'll be in touch soon, as soon as possible.
Motion approved, 5-0.
I guess I still need an agenda. Anybody have anything they need to add to a future agenda? If not, we'll move on to council member subcommittee reports and other reports. Councilmember Fitzgerald.
Yes, thank you. Last Thursday, May 1st, the Assistant League of North County celebrated 40 years in the community and it was really fantastic and learning everything that they do. It's not just locally that they serve. It's not just a thrift store like I thought, but they help with housing for foster kids that age out of foster care. They pay for scholarships. Berkeley, I mean, really high-end Berkeley, Yale, and Harvard. So they, they provide scholarships for a lot of students. Also, I attended on Saturday the Escondido Police Department Care Foundation and PAL fundraiser at Ventana. That was very well-attended and again, always very moving to get to meet a lot of the youth that have been positively impacted by the generosity of the police department. Cinco de Mayo weekend, very busy weekend, celebrated Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. So lots of festivities this weekend. Also, this morning- Also, this morning, I attended with my colleagues the Employee Service Recognition for the City of Escondido, where we celebrated people or employees that have been with us for five years, 10 years, 15, 20, 25, and so on. That was a real treat. And this afternoon, I attended the San Diego County Law Enforcement Officer Memorial Ceremony with the police chief and some of the Escondido police officers. Again, very moving, a very somber experience, but it was a beautiful, beautiful ceremony. And also, I am finally a grandma, so my granddaughter was born on Friday, Parker Nicole, so I will not be here next week. I'm going to be flying out to North Carolina to meet her, so continuing my absence. Thank you.
Councilmember Christian Garcia.
All right, thank you so much. Pretty busy couple of weeks. First off, went to a Clean Energy Alliance meeting. As you saw, the Clean Energy Alliance, we are making a lot of movements in terms of resource allocation and really looking at different options in the region in terms of acquiring different types of resources, clean energy. Also attended the, on May 1st, Day of Prayer. I attended the one with the interfaith, which was just outside, and also with the city elders, which is inside chambers. It's really good and inspiring to be with people of faith and all sorts of faiths, as well as we, you know, get together for a common cause, so that was really beautiful. Attended the Cinco de Mayo festivals here at Grape Day Park. I think that was a lot of fun, even though it was raining. I think they had pretty successful events. Went to a couple of different ones as well. On, what day was it? On April 27th, Esco Kiddos had a fundraiser at Miwara La Jara, and it was really nice to be able to recognize them. I think it was really nice to have so many people support them, including that establishment, and if it came with me eating at a Mexican restaurant, then, you know, that's even more reason to go. And I think I've been meeting with constituents as always, and I, that's the end of my report, so as always, thank you to my community for the privilege of serving you.
Deputy Mayor.
So yes, we had a two-week break, so I hope everyone had a nice spring break. This Sunday, I met with some Cub Scouts who were, had a goal of getting their government badge or patch, so I was happy to be able to help them, and they had some great questions for me. And then I also participated this morning in celebrating the different milestones of service with our city, so congratulations to all the employees that were recognized. And then my San Diego River Park meeting for May has been canceled, so there will be no meeting this month. That's all I have.
You want to go last?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thought that's what you asked for. Okay. The first Indigenous arts and culture celebration was very successful. I had a blast. My family and several other families had a blast. That was a great event. I look forward to more of those in the future. I did have coffee with Angelica Carvahal, who runs a group called the Moms of Escondido. And if you're a mom in Escondido looking for a terrific group of women to get engaged with, that is the group. We discussed future ideas like a mayoral Easter egg hunt or something like that. Grand Avenue is open. I mean, we haven't had the grand reopening, but it's open, and it's fantastic. Yeah, to staff who did that, thank you. Right before it opened, I took my kids down it on our rollerblades. The street was super smooth. It was a great time. We actually rollerbladed to the Community Unity mural, which was a phenomenal event. It was great to see everybody come together, again, celebrating arts and culture. There was a live band. It was, it was a fantastic event. Oh, LAFCO. Had a LAFCO meeting Monday. The big-ticket item on the agenda for LAFCO is whether or not to allow La Jolla to secede from the City of San Diego and incorporate themselves. So I look forward to the next year or two battle debating that. Also went to Cinco de Mayo, the Police Athletic League fundraiser, and participated in a golf tournament for the San Pascual Union School, where my team finished sixth out of like 20th, so next time, we'll win. Sir?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked to be last because my report is going to be about 10 minutes. This is regarding my time that I had the privilege and opportunity to be able to represent the city in Mexico, signing our agreements for friend cities, two cities in Oaxaca, San Jacinto de Milpas, Simatlán de Álvarez, and a city in Mexico City, Álvaro Obregón. So I'm going to ask if you can play the first video. San Jacinto de Milpas y Escondido, California firmaron un histórico convenio de colaboración cultural, encabezado por el presidente municipal Alejandro Díaz, el regidor Joe García y la cínica municipal Crescencia Rojas. Este acuerdo tiene como objetivo compartir con el mundo nuestra identidad, nuestras tradiciones y la riqueza de nuestra gastronomía. Durante la ceremonia, la delegación oficial de San Jacinto de Milpas emocionó a los presentes con la danza de jardineros y el jarabe del valle, mientras la banda de música llenaba el ambiente de alegría y orgullo. Los visitantes de Escondido también pudieron saborear lo mejor de nuestra tierra, disfrutando del tradicional tejate, la cerveza de piña, y otras delicias que forman parte de nuestra historia. San Jacinto de Milpas abre un nuevo capítulo llevando su cultura más allá de las fronteras con el corazón lleno de orgullo y esperanza. Gobierno municipal de San Jacinto de Milpas, 2025-2027. Identidad que nos une, futuro que nos guía. I've requested for this to be translated, and it didn't arrive on time to be able to do that, but as you can tell, this is a, this is a city that is rich in, in culture and in art. And among the things that we're talking about with our friend cities was precisely the exchange of culture art, and in this case, I believe traditional cuisine will be something that we're going to be able to have that interchange with. So let's do Simatlán de Álvarez.
Un rato más vamos a firmar ese convenio de mandada entre, entre Escondido, California y Simatlán de Álvarez, algo que va a ser tal para nosotros porque vamos a poder compartir lo que Simatlán produce, lo que Simatlán tiene en costumbres, tradiciones, tanto gastronómicas como culturales, y eso es el objetivo de hoy la visita de nuestro amigo Joe. Y hoy ser invitados a este hermoso palenque del amigo cortino y grandes amigos, pues qué bueno que yo conoce las fortalezas que podemos encontrar en Oaxaca.
Esta es la primera vez que yo vengo a Oaxaca y estoy conociendo una cultura que no tenía el privilegio de poder conocer. A todo esto nació de un sueño, de un sueño que fue fuera de los gobiernos por invitaciones personales, y de pronto se presenta la oportunidad de su servidor poder darle la bienvenida al presidente municipal, a nuestra ciudad de Escondido. Y de ahí nace algo que parece ser imposible. Sin embargo, aquí estamos aprendiendo, conociendo, para regresar no nada más con el conocimiento, sino buscando la manera en la cual nosotros podemos hacer estos enlaces más fuertes.
Creo que es muy importante hacer estos vínculos binacionales que son tan importantes, especialmente con el mezcal, porque el mezcal es algo muy oaxaqueño y es un licor que está creciendo en los Estados Unidos. Entonces estamos trabajando con Escondido y con todo el país en realidad para poder, pues, promover y ayudar a promover lo que es el mezcal oaxaqueño en los Estados Unidos y que vengan de nuestros pueblos. Eso yo creo que es algo sumamente importante y por eso es una de las razones que estamos aquí, con Escondido pero especialmente en Simatlán.
Me permito someter a consideración de este cuerpo colegiado, el presente punto de acuerdo, mediante el cual proponer la quitar el memorándum de ente viviente, convenio de ciudad amiga entre el municipio de Simatlán de Álvarez, Oaxaca, México, y la ciudad de Escondido, California, de Estados Unidos de América. En mi tirada de votación, se aprueba por nuevos.
Pues para nosotros como oaxaqueños y matecos representa un gran paso. Yo creo que el poder compartir el origen, la cultura, simateca, su gastronomía, sus tradiciones a una comunidad de Estados Unidos como es Escondido, California, la idea de hermanar nuestro Simatlán con Escondido y poder compartir nuestras costumbres, nuestras tradiciones.
Y creo que ese beneficio de toda la comunidad creo que es lo más importante.
Y las posibilidades de poder exportarlo, y yo creo que son muy grandes y felicidades, la verdad, están siendo muy innovadores.
My name is Joe García, and I'm a city council member in the city of Escondido. Yo soy regidor Joe García en la ciudad de Escondido, California, en los Estados Unidos.
Javier Barroso, presidente municipal de Simatlán de Álvarez.
Requested this to be done in English. As soon as I get them in English, I'll be putting them on my social media, so they're available in English. In Simatlán de Álvarez, once again, you can see it's really rich in culture and art, but one of the things that I began to discover is that they have a lot of artisan work there that we can bring in as, at that exchange also. Black claywork, very, very interested in the surrounding areas, so I think that we're going to have this exchange that's going to be very, very rich. So here's a couple of pictures that we'll see. Let's see, okay, this picture right here was a meeting that, part of the reason why I was traveling to Mexico was not only to sign the three agreements, but also to begin to develop relationships with entrepreneurs, with business leaders. Right here, I had the opportunity to meet with Cormex, which is an organization that works between, or it's an agreement between Korea and Mexico. And these are people that approached me. I didn't really go looking for them. They flew in from San Luis Potosí to meet me in the city of Mexico. They brought some proposals, some ideas. We discussed things, and I believe that they'll be coming to Escondido to see what opportunities they have, we have here in Escondido for investment. The gentleman, let me see, in the pink shirt is a gentleman that represents what's called Consejo de Empresarios Mexicanos. He represents a council of Mexican business owners. And what I found very interesting is, we were discussing things, the conversation came back to, well, I believe that we need to begin to invest in the United States rather than be exporting, over there from exporting us importing here. And I found that to be very interesting. They'll also be coming from that organization here to Escondido to begin to talk about that. So it wasn't just about the culture and the exchange that we're talking about, the signing of the sister agreements, but also looking for investment opportunities here in Escondido. Let's go to another picture. This, I had the opportunity to be, to meet. These are two senators for Mexico. The gentleman is, represents Oaxaca. I had an extensive conversation with him. I believe that he will be coming to visit us here in Escondido, and the young lady with us is a senator for Mexico that represents immigrants here in the United States. I believe that she will also be coming to visit here in Escondido later this year. So that was a very nice opportunity for me to be able to meet some of these incredible leaders of Mexico and how we can build those relationships. Next picture. I had an opportunity to be able to interview for that, one of the other responsibilities that I, I had. This is at the equivalent of the Congress for Mexico, the equivalent of our Congress in Mexico, is cámara de diputados, and I was being interviewed regarding a art exhibit by Paco Pablo's that we had, have been working with, that was being launched there in that place. Next picture. Oh, this is some of the artwork, this is called an alebrije, and that's something that I was referring to about Simatlán. So anyway, let me go, right there is another picture of me right there, and don't worry, I wasn't drinking beer on the, on the job. They may call it a cerveza de piña, but when the mayor noticed that I was a little nervous about him, they announcing that, he said, oh, don't worry, we made sure that it wasn't fermented. I said, oh, thank you very much. So that was right before he did that, a couple of, right there, can you go back to that picture? Right there, you can see the flag of Escondido. That's one thing that I'm very proud of. We had the Mexican flag, the US flag, the city flag de San Jacinto de Milpas, and the Escondido flag all flying together, and I was very proud of that. Let's go to the next picture. All right, we'll go to the next picture. I don't look very nice on that one. Should have chosen a different one. All right, right here we are with, this is at the Congress, the equivalent of the Congress, cámara de diputados, and we're about to cut the ribbon for the launch of this digital art exhibit, and this was actually the launching of a nationwide art exhibit, or art contest, first ever in Mexico. The winners of that contest will not only have their art exhibited in Mexico, but it will be coming, traveling here to Escondido to be exhibited. So we were really excited about that, and these are congressional members. The gentleman in the gray is ambassador for Romania, and it was just an incredible opportunity for the city of Escondido to be able to begin to develop these international relationships. Next. I'm standing right there, very proud to be holding the flag of Escondido. Let's go next. Was there one more? That was it? Oh, I missed a picture. Okay, so there was one more, a picture that I missed regarding our signing with Álvaro Obregón. Each city was very, very different. Álvaro Obregón has culture and has art, but this is a city that has close to a million in population, and what we're bringing from them are going to be best practices. We're going to bring from them industry leaders, international investment from them, because they're already working. We're the first city to sign disagreement with them, but while I was there, they went ahead and installed a commission on, they called it internationalization of the city. They're already working with Barcelona, they're already working with Buenos Aires, and I believe that this relationship that is, begins to develop is going to be very, very good for us. So that is more, that will conclude my report of these days that I spent in Mexico representing our city. Thank you very much to my colleagues for having the privilege to be able to, to do that, and I look forward to continue to report as we see these relationships continue to grow.
I have, I have one question. Did you bring us back mezcal or not? I mean, that's-
I, yes, I have mezcal.
Okay, all right, then it was worth the trip.
It's coming, it's in the mail. But yeah, there is mezcal, and there's, there's, it was, it was very, very interesting. The cultures, the first thing that happened when we got off the transportation was this young lady that represented the culture of the first town, San Jacinto de Milpas, brought this, like a vase with smoke and moved it around my face and said some words, and I realized as we were conversing, I got a cleansing. So all the bad vibes of my travel were gone, and it was beautiful culture that I experienced, so thank you.
City manager.
Nothing to report.
Any other public comments?
None.
This meeting's adjourned.